Yeah, me too. We need more expensive laptop. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Town of Lake Luzerne zoning Board of Appeals meeting, which all please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, including the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda this evening, we have a new application applicant Christina Fonda, seven fifty-three Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, asking for an area variance for lot size to allow dwellings on a substandard lot. Public hearing for two zero two three A V dash three applicant Edward Bus, one three six nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, asking for a side yard setback variance for a storage building. Discussion on area variance two zero two two A V dash four applicant Lisa Williams owner, three four nine Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne height variance for an accessory structure. Height drawings requested by the Z B A are provided. Except minutes from the Z B A meeting of March and June and new and old business. Anyone have any questions?
No.
No.
All right, with that, we will go to the new application. Uh applicant Christina Fonda, seven fifty-three Lake Ave, Lake Luzerne area variance for a lot size to allow dwellings on a substandard lot. You are.
She got stuck in the windfalls in the rain, children while she was shopping at Walmart, so I had to rush over here.
Okay, Mary, so I have to ask you. She is listed as the applicant. We do not have a document stating that her husband is allowed to make the presentation.
Are you also on, are you a property owner?
I mean, her husband, I'm not on the actual property as the owner of the, but.
The deed is in here, it's in there.
I'm sorry.
Is she still trying to get here?
Yeah, she fucking dropped the down power line.
All right, okay, so we will postpone action on this until she can get here.
Okay. But she has to be here for it.
Let's just do the first two people that are here and then cross out for if she's not here.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for two zero two three A D dash three applicant Edward Bus, one three six nine Lake Ave, Lake Luzerne, asking for a side yard setback variance for a stored building. Karen, would you read the public notice?
Yes. Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing on July thirteenth at seven oh five P M. At the regularly scheduled meeting, meeting will be held at the municipal complex, five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne, to hear comments on the following area variance twenty twenty-three A V dash three applicant owner Pine Point Cottages and Motel LLC, Edward Bus parcel number two eight six point twelve dash one dash nine residential resort zone R E, one point eight zero acres, location one three six nine Lake Avenue. The applicant has applied for a variance from the zoning board of appeals for relief from the zoning ordinance of the of Lake Luzerne Article Six General Requirements, accessory buildings and uses B three B, side yard setback, the proposed side yard setback accessory structure is five feet and ten feet is the minimum requirement. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentations are in file with the office of the zoning officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M. To four P M. And Friday nine to A M. To four P M. All interested parties and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Any interested parties and citizens may respond by letter, appear in person or participate via Zoom. Access Zoom at zoom dot com or by phone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. The meeting access code for Zoom is nine oh two six eight seven nine seven six four. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, P O Box three seventy-five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four, Lake Luzerne four at Albany dot T W C B C dot com, published July sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Uh, this is seeker exempt. Uh, have we heard from the county planning?
Uh, yes, there in your packet that I gave you tonight is the um report N C I no county impact.
Okay, um, how about A P A?
Uh, that is also in your packet that I gave you tonight. It's non-jurisdictional letter.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public meeting. Mr. Bus, would you step up to the podium?
I did not get any letters, any phone calls. No one came in, looked at the file. I did receive one of the letters that I sent out back as returned to sender vacant unable to forward. And I checked in the um town hall records and no one has a different mailing address or contact for this parcel. So just so you know, I got one back.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? All right, with that, I will close the public meeting. Mr. Bus. Let's discuss your application. Please explain to us what it is exactly that you want to do and why you want to do it and the manner that you propose.
Basically, I'm trying to replace a storage trailer that was an old snowmobile trailer, eight feet wide, twenty-six feet long, with a movable shed fourteen feet wide, twenty-six foot long. And I'm trying to keep it as close to the property line, hopefully within that five feet instead of ten. That way there, if I need to get any heavy equipment in behind the motel for septic or anything like that, that'll give me access. If I stay ten feet off the property line, I will not be able to get heavy equipment back there.
I know in your in your previous middle, you had included um a survey of the property. And the survey of the property had erroneously placed the location of the proposed structure. Um, however, and looking at that survey, with the structure placed eleven feet from the property line, you still had thirteen feet between the structure and the existing uh lean to, I believe you referred to it as.
I believe so.
Okay, that's what the survey map shows. So my question is, is thirteen feet not adequate to be able to get equipment into that front yard if the septic needed to be worked on?
Probably not, because if you've got to get a big truck in there, right at the back end of that is another tree line on nine end, they're not going to be able to turn. So we're going to need to come in on an angle. They can't post parallel to the shed. They got to come in on an angle because for turning radius.
But you could get a truck backed in and an excavator or a front end loader could move dirt to that truck at that location. Is that not correct?
Maybe.
Jamie.
Well, looking at I know where they plotted out that
I've got the.
Thing was incorrect.
Right.
And then we have this other drawing that Mr. Bus provided with us. Five feet and then eighteen feet to the structure and then the fourteen feet to the lean to. Well, remember that last time when we were going over this to bus? That's not where he showed it with the.
No, I I I I get that. He shows it for he shows it closer to the property line. But.
Thought the property line was just like the center of the tree.
Yes, yes.
So.
Kind of kind of kind of nebulous.
Yeah, so he's kind he's kind of losing point there.
But.
Where else are the trees?
From this corner to that corner.
It's like what he has here on this eighteen feet from point there to there and then fourteen feet to this lean to, which is on the out, it's on the end of the building.
That that's that's about correct because because he's proposing moving the shed five feet, five feet from the property line. And if it was ten feet, this is showing it being eleven feet from the property line and and thirteen feet from that corner.
Because the way it's shown here, I mean, you bare, bare, bare bones, you need twelve feet, needs I mean, showing fourteen feet to any kind of accessibility with that five foot off the tree line. With this proposal here, he is which I remember when we were reviewing this, they called it eleven feet, which he didn't want. And if you kind of look in proximity here, that it shifted over this way more create more pinch point here. So, uh, Ed, your your subject and everything is obviously on the nine end side of the motel.
Yes. Actually, the first one tank is right at the back corner of that motel, so they.
Yes, and that lean to is also designed.
I recall that lean to is the washers and dryers or whatever. That's up the other one. That's on the house side. This being five feet that he's asking for. This will work. I don't quite understand this because he hasn't have anything called out for these distances here. Once we just try and.
No, but this is this, well, I did. This is the scale.
Okay.
I mean, it's 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 a it's a it's a stamp drawing from the surveyor. And and that distance in this proposal is thirteen feet versus a proposed fourteen feet.
Hmm, so who's right?
Uh, I would have to go with the surveyor.
But in logistics, if you pull this thing off of that tree line, which is how thick is that tree line? I mean, I'm sure the trees have to vary what they go between probably.
Less than ten feet.
The thickness of that tree line?
Yeah. About that, just one row of trees past.
Yeah, they're pretty much in a row. So they're probably six, yeah, probably six, seven, eight, nine, eleven. But they seem to they appear to be in that straight line like the surveyors that they're yeah, pretty good. Yeah, so it's not like. Really, oh, no, barely. So like spend a couple thousand dollars in the survey to find out it's the tree line. Oh, okay.
Mary, it'll be disputed by the adjacent property owner, the location of the actual property line since there are no posts in those locations, that would be a civil issue.
Between the two property owners, yes.
Okay.
So in in your logistics, Ed, when you were laying this out off your tree line, this is pretty accurate that you came up with. Right, committed with the application. Not really like that tree line.
Some of that eleven feet would be taken up by the by the trees, the thickness of those trees.
Yeah, I know that's we have such a variable of feet right here.
Yeah.
And then the roof over things.
So he's asking for a five foot set or have a five foot setback. So that's essentially anywhere down that whole property line he could use, right? I mean, we're not giving him the the exact location. He's asking to be five feet.
Right.
And it is not a permanent structure either. It's a moving, it's not going to be a foundation on either.
Well, that would that would bring me to the same point if if it's a movable structure and you need to access that front yard, you get equipment in to to rework the septic system, then the movable structure could be moved and allow more access. And then once that rework has been completed, that movable structure could be put back into position and then variance would not be required.
But on the other side, it is not permanent structure, so if it is an issue with anyone down the road or whatever. Yeah. I mean, the logistics.
This is.
Trying to move something like that. Equipment every day.
Okay.
Yeah. Right. You never mind. Or the we have a whole tractor. It's a specialty. You know, it's not very practical, you know.
Okay. Like to review the application, starting with question number one. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is just replacing one worn out storage building with a new one slightly wider. I agree that, wow. It's replacing a portable trailer with a portable building. Stiff on wheels. Yeah, it's a what was the size of the just the existing trailer?
Eight feet by twenty-six.
So we're going from eight to fourteen. Uh, that's more than slightly wider. Six feet. So we're talking about a forty percent increase. Jamie.
Uh, the yeah, that is wider. The length stays the same. Uh, Mr. Bust did provide pictures of that old trailer here too.
Mm-hmm.
So with the question about altering the characteristics, I think it's going to be an improvement because nothing personal, it looks pretty ratty. So I think that I think a new the new shed would not, you know, deviate to make their impact on neighborhood, but you are a forty percent wider in width.
Annie.
Um. So it's for it will not alter the character of the neighborhood. I'm satisfied with this answer.
You see the pictures?
Yeah.
Real.
I think it's going to clean up the neighborhood. Maybe make the neighborhood look better. It's an increase, but everything appears like he's just trying to run the business.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Do you agree with the response?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than the variance. Response is on house side is a volleyball court and ping pong table along with dry well on Perry roadside is septic. It's the attached.
You have it? Matt?
I don't see it.
Here, let me give you mine just.
Thank you.
Does everyone else have the handwritten sheet?
Property across Imperial is cabins and we don't meet fifty foot setback from water. I'm not sure what that means, Mr. Bus, could you expound on that? The statement property across Imperial is cabins and we don't need fifty foot setback from water.
I think on the other side of Perry Road, alternate place. Basically, I'm supposed to be so far off the lake, but if I'm down on the Perry side, you're not going to get the setback from the lake.
So what you're saying is is that on the parry on the lake side of Perry Road, you don't have enough property to put this to places storage shed.
Correct.
Thank you. Jamie.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little familiar with Mr. Bus's property from years past. And I've driven by and nothing has changed, so I don't really see any other solution on where he could put it despite where he has that now.
Annie.
I think he's answered the question. Good. To my satisfaction.
Rail.
Questions answered. I'm satisfied with the response.
Thank you. Question number three, explain whether this request variance is substantial. The response is I need storage capability and room to get between motel and proposed shed for equipment if needed to do work on septic. Not substantial, see additional sheet. Uh, the requirement is ten feet, request is five feet, that's fifty percent. To me, that's substantial. Jamie.
Yeah, I agree. It is. It is a fifty percent request and fifty percent is substantial.
Annie.
It is substantial.
Rail.
Substantial.
Mike.
It is substantial.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is not a permanent structure, not disturbing any soil or cutting down trees. Um, I agree that this would not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Jamie.
Yeah, I I agree. I cannot see any any impact if this was a struggle.
Annie.
I agree.
Rail.
Minimal impact.
I agree.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Just want to replace worn out one with new one and there is no other workable area. Um, we always all know the answer to this. It's always a it's almost always a self-created difficulty.
He provided more.
Yeah, he's.
To that, I'm at a tax sheet, Matt. He provided more.
Um, Ed, the I I I I realize that that number five, that there's additional information, is it? Okay, this is self-created mainly because I'm looking to the future if the work needs to be done for accessibility and there's not another viable area. Volleyball court dry wells, uh, but that doesn't change my response. It's it is a self-created difficulty. Annie.
I agree. It is self-created and he's he is stating that.
Right. Rail.
Self-created.
Mike.
Self-created.
Mr. Ed, the the existing soul filter you have there now, how long has that been there for? Any idea of ballpark this? I think it's eighteen years forever. And how far off the property line is it now that do you move it or it's been sitting there for eighteen years?
It's just been sitting there.
And how far off it is off there?
It was relying on property line. It was almost about five feet off the tree line because I just backed it in there.
Okay.
Actually, John Gillis used his track call to push it in there.
Okay, so it's pretty close where with this thing is parked now. You wouldn't be crowding that property line any further with that new.
Basically, it would be the the right side of the shed would be basically where the right side of the trailer used to be. Pretty much because when I backed it in, it was a trailer. I didn't know about any setbacks, but it's been there for probably close to eighteen years. It's just done.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
And that is coming out. It's actually.
It's it's gone.
It's been scrapped. I'm proving my fault now because I got stopped carving with tarsus. It's not like it's got rain or anything. Okay, I won't say.
Annie, anything further?
I'm good.
Rail.
I'm happy.
Mike.
I'm good.
I would like to make a motion to accept the variance as presented to us. And Mr. Bus.
Second.
We'll call vote on that?
Please.
Right, yes.
Rail.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes. Yes.
Hearing none, Harry.
You're all set. So um I'll be able to issue that permit for you. Then you'll have to go into the county and get the permit there. I'll be in Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, be careful out there.
Oh, we're talking about all over the lakes.
Okay.
I.
Oh, okay.
I have diplomatic immunity of get underneath wires, get down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait till we get so far though. Thank you.
Good night. You are Christina.
Hello.
Next item on the agenda is new application applicant Christina Fonda, seven five three Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, asking for an area variance for lot size to allow dwellings on a substandard lot. This application is seeker exempt. There is no county impact. A P A has been advised to submit, the applicant has been advised to submit jurisdictional inquiry to the A P A. Has that been done?
I have not.
I do that. And yes, I believe I put that in the last page of your packet.
Thank you.
Came in as no county impact.
No A P A, not counting.
Oh, A P A, I'm sorry. Um.
Thought that was like the second meeting?
Yeah, I you have it in process, correct?
Have it in process.
Yeah, we haven't gotten it back yet. You'll need that before the next meeting.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. Uh, Christina, tell me what it is exactly you want to do.
So the building, we we have a main house and then adjacent to that is a garage that was converted into an office um and which already had a pre-existing kitchen and half bathroom. We would like to make it into a second dwelling because it's got all the properties of a dwelling, just ultimately no one's sleeping in it. Um, and I would like to make it into a rental. Um, I don't know if it's going to be a yearly rental or a short term rental, keep my options open for that. But I did buy the property with the intention of renting it. So.
There is ample parking spaces there um for the business that was there before. So there's
five parking spaces.
Five parking spots that are already existing with a turnaround.
The load is already in place. It's got enough for the septic. Ultimately, I need a a shower and your acceptance.
And the parcel is point four three acres.
Yes. And sign here.
And you have septic and city water. Is that correct?
Correct. Fourth fourth Lake community. I guess it's a different water district or something. Someone said it was fourth.
Well, they have town water there. It's a part of the water district.
Okay, um, reviewing the application. Property address seven fifty-three Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, county task map two nine two point eight dash one dash two. Applicant Christina Fonda, one thousand East River Drive, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six phone email. The relief, which is being sought, Article Five Dimensional Requirements. Dimensional table requires twenty thousand square feet for one structure. You have eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty point eight square feet and you are asking for two structures. Is that correct?
Two dwellings, yes.
History of the property, garage converted to computer repair shop addition was added, which included kitchen, half bath and additional workspace area. Drive was expanded and awarded five parking spaces with turnaround space. Uh, the existing unit. Sorry.
Unit from current use or last listed?
Yeah, that that the use as a as the computer repair facility.
Business.
For short term rental. Anyone have any questions on the history? Anyone have any questions on the history or the description of the proposed action?
No, I, I know where the area is.
That's with the variance standards, question number one, describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood to impact adjacent properties. Responses, there's no exterior alterations to the property, requesting to add a shower to the existing half bath. Um, to me, the question is answered, Jamie.
Question answered.
Annie?
Answered.
Rail?
Quick answer.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. We explored the possibility of purchasing the adjacent property to meet the setbacks. But it's still not enough to meet the size requirements, Jason property owner is not willing to sell, is that what? My, my, my page gets cut off, is that what, that's, that's correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh. Questions answered, Jamie?
Question answered.
Question answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Explain whether the requested variance is substantial, responses to projected income of this property as a rental would be of great importance to my family. Me and my family's financial future, due to the size, the ask is substantial, but, but. Everything existing as is. Questions answered.
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 Questions answered, questions answered.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood, responses. No alternation, no alteration to the exterior requesting to add a shower. In my opinion, I see no impact environmental or physical. Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answering.
Question five, described how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. When we purchased the property, we assumed that because it was on an existing.
Business.
Business that we, thank you, that we would be able. That we would be able to use the building as an Airbnb. It is a self-created difficulty, but we were not aware that the property is not sufficient enough for a second dwelling at the time of purchase, questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Any other further discussion? The questions? Motion to approve area variance two zero two three A V dash four Christina.
Motion to approve the variance or to accept the application?
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, thank you. Yeah, I was kind of like I'm looking ahead of myself, thank you, I appreciate that. Motion to approve application area variant two zero two three A V dash four. Second. Roll call, please.
Mike for though, yes. Rail, yes.
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 Carry none, carried.
You're, you're accepting the application as complete.
Yes. What is the, uh? The tent, right?
Yes.
Motion to set a public hearing for area variance two zero two three A V dash four. On July tenth.
August.
Oh, excuse me, again, wow, yeah, it's bad day. August tenth at seven oh five P M.
Second.
Well, yeah, please.
I am, yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Carry none, carried.
So what happens next is I send out a public hearing notice to the newspaper and to. All properties within five hundred feet of yours for any comments. And they will have the, um, public hearing next month at this meeting at seven P M.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, hopefully we'll have a better one.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, here are the extra drawings with Lisa Williams for the elevations.
Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for area variance two zero two two A V dash four. Advocate Lisa Williams, owner three four nine Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne. Height variance for an accessory structure. In our last meeting, height drawings were requested by the zoning board. Those have just been provided to you, the height drawings confirmed measurements that Jamie took. So the numbers which were in the original application are accurate and have been confirmed by a licensed engineer.
Right.
Ms. Williams, are you in attendance?
Yes, sir.
Uh, are you being represented by Mr. Gamoka?
Yes, sir.
And he is also in attendance, I see.
Annie has a question.
Well, you have to pointing out that in here, you have, in the application, it's twelve foot nine to the underside of the bridge house. And indeed, it's thirteen foot nine to the top of the ridge.
The cover sheet was written when I used the measurements that Jamie and I had gotten when we went up and measured.
At least supersede that.
So you, because they weren't accurate to the top of the ridge, you requested. Them to get the drawings done by an architect for the actual height. And the drawings that are provided are by that engineer with the actual height. So the drawings are the correct measurements.
Thirteen nine instead of twelve nine.
Instead of twelve.
Correct.
So that's going to change the variance request also.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you, Annie. Does anyone have any additional questions about the additional information provided by Ms. Williams?
No, I'm all set.
I'm set.
This application requires, um. A short form seeker. Uh, which needs to be reviewed, that's the first thing we're going to do. So if you would go to your packet. Six one seven point two appendix D, short environmental assessment form. Part one. Name of the action or project, height variance. This is three, four, nine Gailey Hill Road, is that correct, Ms. Williams? Mister Gamoka?
He, he's muted also. It's three forty-nine Gailey Hill Road, yes.
Okay, because my application is, is three four nine written over with three four one, that's why I'm asking the question. It is three four nine Gailey Hill Road, correct?
Yes, because we combine the lots.
Thank you. Brief description of proposed action, height variance for garage to replace two-story residence that was on the property. Advocate Lisa Williams, phone number, email, address. Question number one, does a proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulations? Response is no. Question number two, does a proposed action require a permit, approval or funding from any other government agency? Answer is yes. The agency is possibly APA and Warren County Building Department. Here on my cover sheet says APA referrals non-jurisdictional, so I'm assuming the APA is not required.
Correct, I believe I gave you that in your packet this evening.
Yes, thank you. So it is only Warren County Building, correct?
Correct, in my, in my office.
Correct. Should that be listed here?
No, any other government agency.
Question number three, total acreage of the site of the proposed action, point five acres. Is that the size of the parcel before it was combined with the other parcel?
Yes, sir.
So the size of the parcel right now is?
One point five acres, sir.
Thank you. All land uses that occur adjoining or near the proposed action, I see residential. Having been out there, I'm pretty sure that rural, non-agric- non-agricultural applies out on, on Gailey Hill Road.
Or joining or, or near, yeah. I don't know how far Karen can answer that, but how far off is any kind of agricultural?
Yeah.
Is it, is it, it's not adjoining, I don't think.
No.
Or is it near?
It's, it's not, it's not agriculture, it's rural, non-agricultural. And that is definitely this, the setting out there. In my opinion. Um, I believe that should, that box should be checked.
As well as residential?
As well as residential. Uh, actually residential suburb, well, as well as, as residential suburban.
Do you? Ask her if she agrees with that.
Ms. Williams, you agree with that?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to ask my attorney.
Mister Gamoka? Yeah, I believe you are her attorney.
We can't hear you, Chris.
Lisa, you can hear us though?
I can hear you, um. I, I, I'm not sure, I, I don't really understand the question, it's definitely rural.
The question i- is check all land uses that occur on adjoining and near the proposed action. This seeker form, you have checked residential suburban.
Yes, it's residential, I can.
I believe that rural, non-agricultural should also be checked.
Maybe further up Gailey Hill, but I could see all of my neighbors, so I don't know how rural. It is on our, our parcel. It's very residential.
Are you opposed to me checking the rural, non-agricultural box?
Yes.
You are opposed?
No, no, I'm not, no. Yeah.
You are. Agreeing that it is appropriate for me to check the rural, non-agricultural box, correct?
Yes, I am, I am agreeing.
Mary?
I don't, I've, um, I'm not sure, I've never seen this one before, so. I'm a little caught off guard and I, I, I don't know how to react to this, um. I, I don't know.
What's his own dad?
Residential rule.
So isn't that what we stick to, or is it? When it's actually zoned?
Well, that would be residential and rural. So.
Can you read those choices again?
Well, first, I, first, I've got to ask counsel a question because this, this is, this is not the portion, this is the portion that. That she provides to us. But. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we are supposed to ensure that it is correct.
We're trying to identify historical landscapes?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just reading the question. That's, it states check all land uses that occur on adjoining and near the proposed action. To rail's point, the area is, is zone rural residential. Uh. That is the zoning, to me, rural and residential are the appropriate responses to that question, not just residential.
Can they just make it part of the record that they feel that residential, um. That rural, non-agricultural should also have been marked and leave it at that?
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Karen.
And, and don't mark it, just leave.
I have not marked anything. Question number five, is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulations? The answer is yes, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, the answer is yes. Any comments on question five?
No.
No.
Mike? Question six, proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape. Response is yes. Questions?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm from Mister Gamoka's office, can you hear us at this point? Because we're having trouble with you hearing us.
We can now, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Seven, is the site proposed, site of this proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? The answer is no. Question number eight, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No, are the public, are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action, no. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the proposed site? Near the site of the proposed action, no. Does proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Answer is no. Will proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? Uh, the answer is no. Uh, Mister Gamoka, there is no water line running out to that stored building?
No, there's not even a finished floor, it's, it's an unfinished pole barn.
Thank you. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? The answer is no, does the site contain a structure that is listed on either the state or national register of storied places? No, is proposed action located in an archaeological sensitive area, no. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands joining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by. Federal, state or local agency, no. Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any. Land or water body? Answer is no. Anyone have any questions on those responses?
No.
Question fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Check all the applicable forests and agricultural slash grasslands. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species or of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government? As threatened or endangered, no. Is a project located in a hundred-year floodplain, no. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge from either point or non-important sources, no. Stormwater discharge to be directed to establish conveyance systems? No. Does the proposed action include construction of any activities that result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Retention ponds, waste lagoon, dam, no. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility, no. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property. And the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste, no. That is the completion of part one, anyone have any questions on part one?
No.
No.
Part two, our part. Question one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use? Question one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I don't know of any conflict with an adopted land use plan. Zoning regulations? That's why we're here.
So the answer is no or small impact?
I would say, I would say small, no or small impact. Does everyone agree?
Agreed.
Yes.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the, in the use or intensity of, of use of land? I believe the answer is that is no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? It's the only big metal building.
It's the only big metal building on the street.
On the street. I would say the answer is, well. I will poll you. Is the answer small or moderate? Or large?
Um, I'd say it's a moderate.
I would probably agree with moderate.
Rayo?
This question here kind of says one.
And the question, the question is, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Mike?
Say moderate too.
Karen, the answer is moderate. Action to have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause the establishment of the critical environmental area? I do not believe so.
No.
Karen, no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for max transit, biking, or walkway? No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable, reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No.
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or public and private water wastewater treatment facilities? Um, no to both of those. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Uh, I guess you could argue that the aesthetics was impacted, but I would say that the. I would say small. Rayo, you prepare? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, foreign fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, and drainage problems? It's a good question. I don't know. It's already there. I don't know what was there previously.
It was a dilapidated, it was a dilapidated two-story trailer, twice the size, with a height of twenty-two feet. It was approx- twen- twenty-eight by ninety-six, the original structure, set back and only fifty-five feet from the road.
And was the area not wooded and grassed?
Absolutely not. It was a fully cleared lot.
It was a fully cleared lot that had the dilapidated structure on it? Is that the statement?
It's, the statement is, there was a trailer there that was twenty-eight foot with a protruding deck in the rear of sixteen feet by twenty. It was twenty-two feet high. It was fully dilapidated that had to be removed, but the lot was totally clear.
Um, I have seen pictures of that lot. At the time that you purchased it, the lot was, uh, there was a driveway cut. The lot was wooded.
The lot was not wooded. Never was wooded. No trees have been removed at that location. I can give you an affidavit from the contractor that removed the home. There was one maple tree in the side yard that was removed. That's it. It was not wooded. That's an incorrect statement if you look at an area.
Yeah, I would like that affidavit.
That's fine. Only thing they removed was bushes from the front of the building. They removed no trees.
Sorry, I can, I can confirm as the owner of the property that the only thing growing on that property was a maple tree and then a wild grapevine that had climbed up a tree at the rear of the property between my parents' property, which is the original lot that I own now, and the property next door. There were no trees removed other than that one maple tree and the wild grapes that were growing up a tree on the side. It was overgrown, but there was, it was not forested.
Since you offered yes, I would like the affidavit from your contractor stating that no trees were removed from that property.
So the question is, will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, and drainage problems? Uh, my answer is, uh, small impact.
Agreed.
Great.
Question number eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or hu- or human health? Uh, I do not, that be the case, no.
So you've got one question in part three. It says, for every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large impact may occur. Or there is a need to explain any particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. Please complete part three. Part three should, in sufficient detail, identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part three should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be assessed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographical scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts. So you've got that one. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? You've got a moderate there. So for that question, you've got to put some explanation in that part three section.
Okay, well, I'll address the easy part first. Um, I see nothing which has been done by the project sponsor to reduce impacts. There was.
What's the, what's the impact?
There was no land application. There was no building permit. The structure was, was constructed without any approvals. So I can't.
Not a zoning.
I can't.
That's not a zoning matter. We're here for a height variance. If the house was six feet taller, we wouldn't even be here.
We are discussing, we are discussing the seeker application, sir. We are not discussing the very, the height variance at this point in time.
And the, the impact is not moderate. It's minimal.
Uh, that is your opinion. That is not the opinion of this board.
I disagree. You have to describe why to preserve my rights.
I stated that is your opinion. Anything additional to add, Jamie?
No, pretty much the same as I said.
The structure is completely out of character with the locale. There are no other metal buildings of that.
I object that there's one four-hundred feet down the road on the left-hand side of the street that houses a, a trucking business. That's out of character as well.
To me, it is totally out of character with the neighborhood.
I renew my objection. It's down the street. There's a same building that was constructed that houses a dump truck business. For the record. Yeah, I believe that, that is out of character for the neighborhood. There is no other metal storage buildings or structures on that road.
Annie?
I agree with that.
Rayo?
I also agree it's out of character for the neighborhood.
Mike?
I agree that it's out of character for the neighborhood. That should answer, elaborate on our answer, correct?
I, I believe so. It's also, it's a, uh, a question of, uh, potential impact considering its setting, probability of occurring, geographic software, consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts, um.
Sorry, I'd just like to note for the record that my attorney has been muted by the board. Thank you.
The, uh, I lost my train of thought. Long-term or cumulative, cumulative impacts, um. To me, and this is a seeker application. This is, so, um. I'm looking at a picture um, that shows a, a, a grassed area. Um, and I see a building which is covered by crusher, stone, the drainage is completely different. Um, I don't know if the, if the, uh, ground around that is, I assume it's still pervious. It's not impervious, but, but, uh, I think there are some definite infernal changes which have been made. As to what the long-term impacts, that I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. It's obviously different, but the impact.
How old is this picture?
This is August of fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen. And when did they purchase this property?
In, I believe, eighteen.
So in the four years that
Eighteen.
picture was, to when they purchased it, there could have been a difference to it, or maybe that work was done at that time?
Not that I, not, not that I can find.
We don't know. We have to go by what we see.
Right.
So that will need that affidavit. Says, nothing was caught, then, basically, I'm just thinking, it may have happened in that little window.
Right.
The big spruce tree is not there anymore. It was there in twenty eighteen and it's not there in twenty twenty-two, according to G I S.
This, this spruce tree was on the other lot. It was not on the property that you are referring to. The spruce tree was removed to put the house on the other lot. The spruce tree was not on this property because it was right outside the bedroom window in the old trailer. And I note again, for the record, that my attorney has been muted and is not participating in these proceedings.
Thank you. Uh, did you hear that, uh, Ms. Williams?
No.
Uh, counsel says that he can speak after, but he does not get to interrupt the, your counsel.
Noted.
Karen, you have, uh, what you consider to be a sufficient response for part three?
I will be able to get it off of the tape afterwards. I did not get everything as you were talking, but I can get it off of the CD afterwards.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions on the seeker?
No.
No.
You want to give them a chance?
Um, and my question is, um, do they get a chance to respond to a seeker?
What they say doesn't need to be taken into account in your decision, but if you would like to give them an opportunity to be heard.
I am more than willing to give Mr. Gamoka the opportunity to be heard.
No, unmuted, Chris.
On the seeker.
I have nothing further on a seeker, other than there's another garage down the street that, you know, matches the size and height of the existing building.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for the record, we gave you a chance to respond, and that was your response.
That's my response.
Okay.
And I, and my objection is noted.
I don't know what judge was.
Okay.
So on the secret, it's a negative.
They should make that motion.
Yep.
Make some motion.
That you did not find, it will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. You should make a motion to not.
Back to my secret, which I just lost. Yeah. Make a motion that this application will not result in any, any significant adverse environmental impacts. This is in regard to the seeker.
A second.
I'll, I'll vote on that.
Yes, sir.
Mike?
Yes.
Rayo?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen, not Karen.
Thank you. Karen, I have not closed a public meeting, hearing on this, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have anything additional from anyone else in the public?
I have not received anything further in by anyone on this variance, no.
Is there anyone in the audience that has comment? With that, I will close the public hearing. Yes.
Yeah, can I get that picture back?
I've got like.
Yeah.
I've got like twenty of them.
I only need one. I just want to make sure I had one through the files, so. Thank you.
Go on. The property sale.
In, is. If we're rolling again.
Okay.
Thank you. I will wait till you get to your station.
Right there.
I would like to go over the application. Um, and in going over. And in going over the application, keeping in mind those things that we are looking at when deciding on whether or not to grant an area variance. But first, I am accepting the fact that the information on the first page of the application is correct. And like to move to the second page, brief history of the property. History of the property, prior building was a two-story seventy-one foot wide by twenty-five foot deep nineteen-foot tall dwelling with porch enclosed encroaching in front yard as well as fifteen by twenty non-conforming two-story deck. All of which were in compliance with zoning at the time. I'd like to deal a little deeper into the history of the property, Ms. Williams, please feel free to correct me. The property was purchased in twenty eighteen, both three forty-one and three forty-nine, each site had a manufactured home. In nineteen, both manufactured homes were demolished with appropriate permits. In twenty twenty, a double-wide manufactured home was installed on three forty-nine with permits. In twenty twenty-one, a fifty-six by thirty-two by nineteen foot nine inch three bay garage was constructed without town or county permits. In twenty twenty-one, you received a notice of violation, apparent violation on December third for a twelve by twenty-six storage building on three forty-nine, a three bay garage structure on three forty-one, which was an accessory structure without principal building and exceeded the height requirements in twenty twenty-two. You join both parcels on three forty-one and three forty-nine to correct the accessory building without a primary building. The height violation remains, is that correct?
Is my attorney available, or is he still muted?
You're both unmuted.
Okay, thank you, the property was purchased in two thousand twelve, the house was placed on it in two thousand nineteen.
Oh, which prop, which property was purchased in two thousand twelve?
Original parcel three forty-nine was purchased in two thousand twelve from my parents.
And three forty-one?
Was the parcel that was purchased thereafter.
So they were purchasing, both parcels were purchased in two thousand twelve?
Now, the second parcel was purchased after I believe in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, I don't remember.
They were both demolished in nineteen?
Yes, sir.
And they were both demolished with both county and town permits?
Yes.
The double Y was installed on three forty-nine in twenty twenty with county and town permits?
In twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen?
I think the C O was issued in twenty twenty.
I thought so too.
Well, I've got the file. But they could have, you know, could have overlapped one year into the next, is my point. Demo was completed, the C O for the demo was issued May twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen by the county. And storage building. The demo on the other one was completed May twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. And the completion of the new double wide was October third, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
So that's five permit processes. Matter of like what, two or three years?
Oh, let's, uh, two demo permits in nineteen. Construction permit in nineteen. So
There's what, I'm sorry?
Septic permit.
I don't, I think they use the existing septic, I don't think they did new, let me, I will look though, hold on.
The septic was upgraded into May of two thousand fifteen, and the permit was filed.
So you've reused the septic system then?
Yes, I believe we had to add, we had to add a couple of pipings to it to be in compliance, but it was, the original septic was upgraded from a cesspool in two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
So at least four actions.
I don't know how you can go through that many permits on this kind of stuff and then think you can just put a garage up with no permits.
That size.
That size, I mean, that is
Well, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that part yet.
I was just jumping right to that, how do you, how do you do four permits or five permits? And then all of a sudden, I'm the last biggest one, decide you don't need one.
Ms. Williams, was it the same contractor for the demolitions and the constructions of all the structures?
Yes, sir.
And your contractor knew to get permits for the demolition and the, the construction of the double Y, but not to get a permit for the storage structure?
I can't speak to what my contractor's intentions were, he is not present.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the history?
No.
Nope.
So you guys are familiar with the permitting process?
I, I wouldn't know. Everything was done.
So somebody else did all permits for you?
I, I certainly
He was contracted third party.
I'm looking.
Thank you.
Lisa Williams gave she did, she didn't fill in the designated, but she signed the authorization form for the demolition, site work and concrete construction. And that was at the demolition of the home. And Golden Paws was the applicant on the application.
There is no documentation of a designated agent other than
She has signed an agent form, she just, it was not filled in who the agent was, but the permit was gotten by Gold, Golden Paws excavating.
Okay. Any other questions on the history?
No.
Nope.
No.
Description of proposed action. Maintain, this says fifty-one by thirty, but I believe it's fifty-six by thirty-two. Unfinished storage shed with gravel floor seventeen feet nine inches in height, replace twenty-five by seventy-one nineteen-foot two-story home on property. Going into the questions on the various variance standards. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is current structure will join two lots and create storage structure that is smaller in size and scope to the previously existing dilapidated two-story structure that existed. The current structure did not join the two lots, the two lots were joined by going to the planning board and joining the two lots such that there was a principal structure on the lot and the accessory structure was no longer in violation, so the construction of the the storage structure has nothing to do with joining the two lots. These large metal structure is inconsistent with the neighborhood. The existing dilapidated two-story structure that existed. There was a statement that, that I'll, I'll jump to the next question. Attempted, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than variance, the response is attempted to maintain the prior seventy-one by twenty-five foot building as a storage building, however, became structurally unstable and had to be demolished. The previous, the previous structure was a, was a trailer. It had no way, shape, manner or form resembled the structure which was constructed. I don't know what the purpose of the what the storage consideration was going to be for the existing structure. I failed to see how it meets the requirements of the structures replaced it. The structure was, was demolished very shortly after its purchase and the new building was constructed. So I'll go back to number one because I have not pulled anyone. To me, the, the variance alters the change, the character of the neighborhood and it impacts adjacent properties. And we have statements from adjacent property owners, pro and con to that, so. Jamie?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, the, the structure does not fit into the community there whatsoever and yeah, can't read their mind on why they did it right out of the gate, but it just does not fit with the rest of the community up there.
Can you explain why?
Because it's a metal structured rectangular box in a residential area with wood constructed buildings surrounding it.
What is, what does the construction have to do with regard to the character? There's a garage the same size down the street, it's not an architectural review process, it's a construction process.
Mr. Kamoka, this is not, there's no public comment at this point in the procedure. Annie?
That's it.
Annie?
It does alter the characteristics of the, the neighborhood. So it, it is an impact.
Rail?
I believe it's an impact, it's completely different looking than what was there, different location, different orientation.
Mike?
I believe it's an impact and obviously
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response is attempted to maintain prior seventy-one by twenty-five foot building as a storage building, however, became structurally unsound and had to be demolished. I don't see any, I don't see that any alternatives were considered.
It's, it's very vague because like you said, it doesn't really show it and who deemed it on structure, is there an affidavit saying that engineer came in, it was structurally compromised, that it couldn't be reused, and besides, that was a family dwelling, not a storage unit. Which was torn down to become a storage unit, not a family dwelling.
Correct. Annie?
It's, um, definitely out of order. But I, I do agree with Jamie, it, it is, it's not replacing the residence, it is a definitely a storage structure.
Rail?
I agree with them, it's, you know, it is, it looks like a storage structure, it's not a
Mike?
I agree with everybody down through that same thing, residential storage structure.
Question number three, explain what it is
I'm not really sure we answered that question, so
Okay.
The question is what other alternatives have been explored to achieve the solution other than the variance? So I think, I don't, I cannot put words into your mouth, but I think someone said they don't see other alternatives that were explored.
I okay, I the building was constructed. The existing structure, the dilapidated structure, there are words not mine. Uh, which was they say is structurally unsound, and we have no documentation of that. Had to be demolished. They demolished the building. They built the new structure. I don't know that any alternatives were considered.
They haven't shown any alternatives.
Correct, they have not shown any alternatives on the application.
Yes, I concur.
We good?
I think so.
Okay. Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is no, the current structure is smaller in size and scope to which was previously approved and existed on the site. Yes, that is correct, the previous structure was approved and existed on the site. It is a substantial variation, the maximum of height is the height of the new double wide, which is thirteen nine, Karen?
Thirteen nine, correct. The top of ridge.
Versus the storage structure, which is
Seventeen nine.
Seventeen nine, so ballpark forty percent. I consider forty percent to be pretty substantial deviation.
Yeah, just looking at the height, just the height as itself, yes, the difference of the height is approximately like forty percent, and I believe that is substantial.
Annie?
Substantial.
Rail?
I believe the percentage is substantial.
Mike?
Difference in the height is substantial.
Question four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It has aesthetic impacts, but I don't think it has adverse physical and environmental impacts. Jamie?
I agree, except for physical and environmental, there really doesn't present any kind of an impact.
Annie?
I agree.
Yeah, minimal impact for the physical and environmental.
Mike?
Yep, I agree.
Question number five, describe how the request of variance is not a self-created difficulty. The response is attempted to salvage the existing large building as purchased. Again, I don't know how you salvage a trailer and turn it into a large storage facility. The building was constructed without permits, it is absolutely a self-created difficulty. Jamie?
Yeah, I agree, there's no permitting, there was just nothing, it was just blatantly done, so I see it's a totally self-created difficulty.
Annie?
Self-created.
Mike, excuse me, Rail?
Yes, it's definitely self-created.
Yeah, it's, it's self-created.
Any other discussion?
Now, we're supposed to look at this as if the building is not there, correct?
No.
No. The building is already there.
Oh, you're saying taking that into consideration?
We, we should not even take into consideration that the building is there.
Came to you before they built this, what would you?
They guess that's how
So that's where, I think we're asking better what our mindset is supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, we can't feel like we're pigeonholed to approve this because
It exists.
They did it, I mean, they went through four or five permits. So there's no ignorance of mint process. There could have possibly even been a method to this, knowing that it's too high and saying, let's hurry up and get it in before we're caught.
So to answer your question, you do not need to feel like you need to approve this because it's there, I will tell you the rest of that statement should not be considered in your decision-making.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Where, where are we with that, with that seeker and the affidavit, the trees, is that something that's going to affect us, or is that something they offered up to, to give us, or That infect us all with our zoning, uh, decision-making or not?
So now that the public hearing is closed, you have sixty-two days to make a decision. So that is your choice whether that affidavit is going to affect your decision or not and it has to be in within.
So we already requested the affidavit that she. Lack of tree removals in the contractor. So I think that's, that we should have it in front of us before we. We personally, my end of it, before I move any further on it.
Yeah, we requested.
Before we asked for it.
We requested the information.
Chris, anytime it's fine to give it, but I don't know if you can give, you'd have to reopen.
They have sixty-two days to present that to us.
You have sixty-two days to make your decision whether or not they present that to you.
How long do they have to present that to us? To the next meeting?
Um, that's.
Or if it just doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
That's true. It doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Make a motion to table action on area variance two zero two two A B dash four. Until our next. Meeting.
I second that. Would the, hopefully it would be, uh. Presentation of the affidavit for the tree, the lack of tree removal.
I would get the.
More, yeah, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ray? Yes.
Annie? Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Matt? Yes. I need that. Minutes.
We won't be back over one month.
Uh.
Karen?
Eight, nine, hold on, Robert. It would be September thirteenth, it would be sixty-two, in sixty-two days is September fifteenth. Which is a Wednesday before then, that, so we only made. Decision next week. Or have a special meeting. Or have a special.
Karen?
I'm sorry.
Back or we hold?
No, I have, I only need one set.
Thank you.
So they voted on tablet?
Table, yeah. Right.
Okay. So the, um. The Williams, um, Lisa, you volunteered up to get an affidavit on the tree removal. So. When you get that, you can provide that to me. Otherwise, they will bring up your variance application again at the next meeting.
We'll have that submitted, we'll have that submitted immediately.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is minutes for the zoning board meetings for March and June. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yes, I did.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Oh. No, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Uh. How about the March minutes?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Oh, well then. Then we're not going to vote on. Uh. New old business. New business. I understand someone is going to be a member of the town council. And will no longer therefore be able to be a member of the zoning board of feels. So. If anyone has, you don't have to state them now. If anyone has any recommendations. Someone you think it would be. Dravel asset to this board. Please let me know. Feel free to discuss it with me. You guys know people around here a lot more than I do, so. I would appreciate anything important that you have. Karen, do you have anything?
I do. Um, I had sent you out an email along with the planning board on. Some training that's going to be given in late Placid, October twelfth. Um. The three people that have not gotten their training for this current year is Jamie Rail and Burgess, Burgess not being here. So again, the town will pay for that day. If, if you can book it in. Um, I can do it by a voucher. So I need to know when you've signed up for it so that I can submit a voucher to them for payment. So if you just let me know, I, I gave you, I sent an email out. There's a link there for you to go in and register. So that's the only thing that I have.
You know, I think I pretty much sure I did it.
You've already registered?
No, no, I already did the training for this year.
I have Matt, Annie and Mike as completed. I don't have you.
Check.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.